And we need a motion to come out of executive session.
Valer, please speak up.
We just made a motion to come out of executive session. It's been seconded and all figures signed.
Are the times documented?
Okay. Item five, discussion applicant Ephraim Halpern, 36 North LLC. Location 36 North Street. Application for site plan. Section block and lot 107 hyphen two hyphen six three. RN zoning district. Proposed use multi-family dwelling to public facilities. Advised site plan proposal includes construction one, six unit townhouse dwelling and keeping and converting existing single family home to a two-family dwelling and removal of existing garage.
Board members, it's good to be back to present. I think we're at a stage where we've answered most of the technical comments to date regarding the project. We approved that the site can handle stormwater requirements of the development. It can handle the parking. We've taken into consideration the stone wall along the drive to the cemetery and to this project. We've provided renderings of the buildings. So I believe that the board also declared themselves the lead agency at their last meeting. So we're at a plan. We've danced the EA F. Believe all the two thirty nines went out. We got one back from Orange County planning. So I think we're at a point where we can move this along complete seater and go towards a draft resolution.
Do you have any questions?
How does the presentation of new plans affect us?
You got new plans, Brian?
We can't hear you, man. We can't hear a word.
Why don't you get microphones?
Why don't you get microphones? If you raise my taxes $200 and I'll get you the microphone.
The driveways, current now?
Yes. You've seen those plans before tonight though, correct?
Can you send out the form? Do we have any hard copies of those or just email copies?
Of what?
The questions you sent us.
I should not bring you extra copies.
Okay.
The technical copies?
I have it.
All right, do you want to run through the items?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of it.
All right, we have previously commented that once the information regarding proposed water and sanitary usage was provided that the project should be referred to the DPW for their input. I believe we're at a point now where you could do that. Send it out to the water department and DPW. See if they have any comments regarding the proposal. We have previously asked regarding the driveway site distances on the plan. They note that there will be clearing required to provide the site distances that are being shown. We've asked to see the limits of whatever the necessary clearing is. I don't believe we have that yet. I haven't seen it on the plan submitted. There's a couple of questions, Dave, just for you to look at me of a chance. The current grade into the property. Everything in the front just flows directly at the building. Later I have comments about the depth of the sewer service. If you create a swale and then slow back up into the building, that might work out better for you. Take a look at it.
Yeah, I, you know, if we can get those comments.
I'm getting a call right now.
Oh, great.
We are the new chairperson.
Sure.
Our chairwoman resigned. She was kind of also acting as secretary, so my apologies if that didn't get to you. Because I was obviously a terrible acting secretary.
Again, we can't hear you back here.
So we'll, as soon as we get those comments, we'll address the sewer line.
All right, we still have not received a SWP?
Right. So the SWP is being prepared, okay? And it'll be consistent with the stormwater plan that we submitted.
Okay. The infiltration area, we had commented previously to ask you to show a little bit more information about how it was going to be protected during construction. It was just completely eliminated from the plan.
Well, I thought we showed you the erosion control.
It was taken off the erosion plan. The whole infiltration area was eliminated and any protection around it was taken off. So if you could just take a look at that.
Yes. Might have been a later turn around.
Right. All right. I saw you did specify the light fixtures and you added details still to get the manufacturer's cut sheets.
Yes. We tried to, you know, we kept in the, in the light fixtures. We definitely noted the historicity of the building and the area, so the light fixtures we picked are definitely period light fixtures.
On the existing building to remain, we're still not seeing any proposed lighting. You're not going to have any exterior lighting on this building at all?
Well, what does, what does the board want? I mean, in a sense that it's going to be a two-unit house. If it was just a two, if it was a two-family, what, I mean, do you want to have lighting that would surround the building? I, I don't, you know, I don't know how much.
It's not really a question at this point of what the board wants. It's a question of what is it you're looking to do? I mean, even a single-family house normally has at least the light over the walkway.
Sure.
But as is, there is zero light on the exterior of this building.
All right, we could show some landscape lighting then, you know, to.
It's a question of what you want. If you don't want any lighting, then that's the question that the board has to look at.
Yeah, I, if we do want to have lighting, I would keep it at a minimum. But I think the road, the house is so close to the road and so close to the neighbor that anything I would do, some lighting along the parking area where we're proposing to put the four cars. But I wouldn't inundate the area with lighting. So in our next submission, perhaps we'll propose one or two lights along that area.
All right, you did expand the landscape plan. So you now have 22 shrubs and 16 trees. They're all deciduous. We did receive comments from the county looking for a more extensive landscape plan. Board members, you should take a look, see, do you feel the landscaping is adequate? Are you looking for something different, something more? You know, if this is really more of a, what does the board want to see rather than a specific technical per code, they need this many of something. On your parking calculations, Dave, just take a look at those. I think it's just a typo. Eight units at two spaces per unit.
You don't like my math?
No, no problem. You've got up front, the existing building is going to be a two-family dwelling.
Correct.
They're not striped out, but what's shown as the parking area for that two-family dwelling scales that it could support about two parking spots.
Even with the turnaround, you want to expand it a little bit?
If they're going to park in the turnaround, that means people parked in the spaces can't turn around. So if you can just designate the spaces and make it clear what your intent is there.
Sure.
According to your grading plan, from the sidewalk right in front of the building up to the finished floor, there's going to be an 18-inch step?
Yes.
That's correct?
Yes, we had to raise the building up to minimize the impact in the back to get the stormwater.
Okay. And then if you can just add the limit of disturbance, the area of disturbance. And then take a look at your stormwater infrastructure. Right now, everything has to run down the whole driveway, then across three quarters of a parking lot. You get to a catch basin. Couple more structures along the way.
Down to its end?
It's a long run.
Yeah. Okay.
In the winter, you get a little bit of snow on there. You can get the water blocked off. It's going to all freeze. Just take a look at that. That could be part of the SWP if you prefer to do it that way.
We can add it to the plan a little bit, but.
So that's the technical comments that I have.
Thank you. Question regarding the snow removal. Any ideas on how you can handle the snow removal?
Yeah, well, towards the end of the drive. I mean, we extended the drive a little further than the parking area, so it can definitely accumulate and put snow in that area.
And then showing on the truck turnaround diagram here for the garbage truck, it's showing the garbage truck has to hop the curbs in order to get in here.
Both nine.
What's it showing?
We'll take a look at that.
Regarding the 12 by 12 dumpster enclosures, going to be rooming that for recyclables also?
No, quite a few boards have been asking for that, so they've been allowing us to increase the dumpster size to improve recyclables. We could do that here also.
Given the space that you have in the back, that would prove to have just some additional parking?
Well, that's up to the board.
Well, I know it's not required, but just, you know, for any kind of deliveries, any kind of guest or visitation, there's no parking on North Street, I believe, so.
Correct.
You're going to be parking in the driveway or?
Well, actually, on the county review, it says no parking in the driveway.
Correct.
Well. So I'd like you to consider that. On looking from the.
Currently, they have 22 parking spots.
Sixty, that's right.
Are required, a total of 15.
Little miss.
As far as.
One, two, three, four, five, six, and six is 12.
We've got six units, one in the garage, one in the driveway. That's 12.
Oh, so you're counting the garage as parking space?
Correct.
Okay. That was my mistake. I wasn't counting the garage. Around, looking from North Street around the left side of the building, is there any reason to put any kind of egress there, walkway or anything for emergency, et cetera?
Oh, which plan you want?
Among.
C dash two.
C dash two?
Okay, could you ask me a question?
Left side of the building?
Yes.
There's just grass there?
Yes.
Is there any reason to put any kind of egress on that side of the building for emergency access, et cetera? You have the driveway.
Well, right now, right now, the road that we provide along the property and then along the back satisfies emergency vehicle access per the code. I mean, if you wanted something additional, we could entertain it. I would have proposed more asphalt that if you wanted to create emergency vehicle access along.
No, I was thinking just sidewalk, just.
Oh, just sidewalk?
Just foot, foot traffic. In other words, it'd be better to stroll somewhere, you know, than when you get around there on that side of the building.
So on the north side or there's, on the right side or left side?
Looking from the south side. Just, I think it's just sidewalk.
Yes.
Small sidewalk to the backyard.
Additionally, on the topic of sidewalk, the county does recommend that on the north side that the, you just have that sidewalk there in front of the units. You just go ahead and touch the driveway. The county recommends that.
Yeah, to connect it to the driveway.
I sent you a few other ground comments.
Yeah, I have. And actually, they recommend, well, to go digressing right now, but they recommended a few species of landscaping we can add between the existing dwelling and the new units.
I mean, take a look at them. I thought they were pretty straightforward. So if you have objections, you can come in and discuss it with the board.
The, the stone wall that borders Presbyterian church and cemetery, looks like the driveway gets pretty close to that. And eventually with the stone removal, et cetera, do you think there'll be any disruption of the wall?
No. We've kept it, we kept it a good distance and at that point it's below the wall. So, and we show bio, we show grid pattern or landscaping, not like a landscaping fabric detail along there to stabilize everything, destabilizing fabric.
How far below is it?
You know, I don't have that answer right now, but it's a couple of feet. I mean, not huge.
Two feet, it looks like it's only about five foot from the stone wall.
Or the distance from the stone wall?
No, it said, you said below, and I just thought it was close to on grade. If it's not on grade and it's a two-foot difference, the weight of that wall and the snow.
The subject property is on the low side of the wall, roughly six feet lower than the cemetery driveway.
Okay, so the stone wall is someplace in between in terms of elevation?
Well, elevation, the, the top of the wall is at grade with the cemetery driveway. The bottom of the wall is at, at grade with the subject property.
Okay, the one I'm concerned about is that the stone removal or any access there is going to hurt that stone wall.
Well, they're on the low side of the wall and their current grading plan is only showing, filling up against the bottom of the wall, not cutting down below.
And I just want to confirm, there's no, no basements or crawl spaces or anything under this, it's built on grade on slab?
Well, well, no, there is a basement in the back that houses the garage. So each unit has a garage at the lowest level and that's on the, the north side of the property or in the back. And the garage doesn't take up the whole footprint, so there will be some kind of basement in association with the garage and then the first and second floor.
So these are going to be three, potentially three floors?
In, in levels, yes, but per building code, no. It'll remain a two-story building.
And you managed to keep the building height still at 36 feet? Or under 35 feet?
Thirty-five, yeah. But we, we're not looking for a baron to be kept below the zoning requirement. Actually, it's, depending on the average, the top of ridge is at 28 feet, six inches. So we're well below the 35 feet.
I have some comments. One. Yeah. First, there was an email from D E C saying that they were going to issue a screening letter. Did they ever do that?
We did get a letter.
Could you say that louder so we can hear you?
There is a October 20th, 2020 email from D E C saying they were going to issue a screening letter, so if I could just go. I don't remember seeing that letter.
Yes.
And I don't remember, did Chicago come and tell us yet?
Yes, we have that.
Okay. Did we get, I'll give that?
Yeah, I hope it's in one of our past submissions what we do recently.
I could take a look. And I know that you submitted for comment from the, to the Department of Interior. I don't know if they ever got back to you or anything.
I, I believe we received, we received all our alerts back from the state.
The public can't hear the attorney at all.
Am I lost in what you speak to the water department? Just get a will serve letter since you're not looking through municipal?
A what letter?
Will serve letter from the water department.
Are these for sale or rented?
These are going to be for sale or for rent?
All right, we, the economy keeps changing, so right now the owner's thinking of renting.
What's this square footage for you, please?
We're going to remind people this is not public comments for this meeting.
When do we get the comment?
At the, at the public hearing, Tom. Unfortunately, this is, this is not a, for this particular topic, it is not a question and answer or question or public comment.
Don't you open the public comment at the end?
I believe I don't have the power to do that just yet.
And can you at least talk to the traffic issue?
We will be covering the traffic issue. Thank you. And we'll just keep going at this point. All right, so stated that they're going to be a renter, do they need to make a declaration upfront whether it's going to be for rent or for sale or they can be either?
I don't think it requires.
With respect to traffic on North Street, I don't know, North Street's a very busy roadway. Have you done anything with the D E C or done any kind of traffic analysis?
Well, with the D E C, both.
Should we deal to?
Yeah. Something. It's been so long, I think we did a traffic report.
I have, I have listed on my notes, has traffic study been discussed by board? There, I do have a traffic study in my files.
I'd like to see that all the time.
We do it from eight to nine and two to three?
So we have a traffic report.
Well, we have the traffic report.
It was done by independent, you know, independent engineering firm, so you have it, we can resubmit it.
I mean, if it's in the file, it's on the hold.
David, it might be, it might be helpful at this point to get a list of what has been received, just so that we all can keep track.
Not a problem.
Either of you have any more questions? I think our questions are done at this point. I think, I'm sorry.
Are we submitting to the water department or the, and DPW or are you?
Does the board have a preference?
Well, I'm fine, I'm fine with that submitting to the DPW. If there's a choice, they can do it.
I would just see, see the M R E correspondence.
Of course.
Yeah.
We just get a copy of the letter, showing that it's going to press and press.
Okay.
That way we can show the board that it was submitted, whether or not we get a response.
So at this point, there's no more questions, I believe we still have to get some information from the board before we move forward?
Nick?
Yeah, I believe we proved the project.
The biggest outstanding item is the SWP.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Actually, you know, all right, that will be our, our focus for the next submission is to get the SWP done. In addition to documenting all the enclosures that we've had to date and submitting to the water department, DPW, we'll, we'll do all, we'll get that tidied up and for our next submission.
If you can, you know, the drop offs with what's been, with the documentation, I think that would be helpful for organization, David.
Sure. Okay, that's great.
Did I just hear that this project was approved?
No. Not sure we heard that from.
The gentleman that's sitting in front of me, why I'm clarifying.
That's how long we can hear what's being said back here. A public hearing that we can't speak at, but we can't hear.
Maybe, maybe you need to, if you can talk to the board, village board, for some type of microphone system so everybody at the table and the podium can understand what's going on and the audience understands, they have the same issues we've asked them also to have some type of audio system to be used. This is very first grade.
All right, I'm an hour into this and I understand some of the challenges and some of the things that we can address, we'll address.
Can somebody please explain why this is a regular meeting and it's not going to be open for public comment at the end?
We have two types of meetings, work sessions and, and public comment meetings, so.
This is in the work session?
This is in the work session?
This is a regular meeting?
It's not a meeting.
At the beginning of the process, the board collects and evaluates information from the applicant. Once they feel the applicant has provided adequate information for the public to be able to review and have a true opinion of what the project will be, then they set a public hearing. That public hearing is the meeting at which you, the public, have the opportunity to come and voice your concerns, your thoughts regarding the project. Right now, we're still at the point where we're trying to get enough information to allow for a thorough evaluation of the project.
Okay, but that said, we're talking about shrubs and lights and we don't even have a site plan that we can review with numbers, square footage, lots, size, et cetera. So do you understand what this looks like?
I, I understand, but this is the planning process that New York State has developed.
The site plan is available for public review at Village Hall.
That's all, that's all that, it's public.
Yes.
And.
Do they like be, do they post it publicly?
So it's just, not, not to just keep going, the, all the information that's before the board is available to the public.
Yes.
Okay, it just has to be requested from the Village Hall as soon as it comes in, so.
And what's the protocol for that now?
Come in and ask and work.
Same as last meeting.
Doesn't work that way?
All right, well, it will work that way now. In any case, and I just want to make sure I get this right. If anybody has any questions, I believe they will have to go through the building department first before they come to us or can they, can I give out an email and they come to me?
And good luck with that.
Well, if they come to me, there will be answers.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, not you.
That's all right.
This is a new position for you.
Can I give out an email or should they all have to go through the building department?
It's supposed to, I think the decision was to have the liaison go through from the building department.
Okay, my understanding from people that I've spoken to, a number of people, was that it's not happening.
The, the, there's no secretary for this board, so the building department is acting as part secretary and that's why there's delays and things.
If I give out an email, people can use that I have specifically for the building department, is that okay?
It's, it's, I think, I think the process has to go through the building department.
I understand.
So if you want to change the village process, we can discuss.
Again, we can't hear what you're saying, Madam Attorney.
I'm sorry, I'm not good at screaming.
We're, we're discussing communication between the public and the village board and how to make it better.
That leads to a point of contact, can I get it from you like we've done it?
Yeah, so I, as you heard, I asked for Dropbox, so I can provide it to anybody that emailed me. I tried my best.
So we're, we're, we're trying. So for right now, we're going to send it to the village department. I'm going to have a conversation with John Terry to make sure anything that comes addressed to the planning board will get to me quickly, okay? And we'll respond at that point. So we're good on this project?
Will the applicant be at the public hearing as opposed to the last time?
Yes.
I've never missed a public hearing. But the applicant or his representative will be at the meeting.
Who can answer questions? Not just take notes?
We would hope that they are there to answer questions.
We'd like to know beforehand.
That's not under our control law.
We'd like to know beforehand.
Who, who actually makes the decision whether they will answer or will not? Who actually makes the decision whether they will answer or will not? Because it's extremely frustrating to come with legitimate concerns and questions and just be listened to and then have to wait over two months for responses. I'm not being facetious, I'm just wondering who makes that decision?
She's asking you to answer any questions.
The applicant is the one that makes, whether or not they're going to address the public comments and how they're going to address them comes from the applicant.
Well, shouldn't they be kind of mandated to do so, not given the leisure of it? That's what it sounds like. I mean, my God, ladies and gentlemen, this is like insanity.
Well.
It's like a Twilight Zone.
Answering questions is one of those things where we can ask them to answer or if they choose to or not, they don't necessarily.
They don't get approved.
And how in the world?
I, I, we can't turn this into a public debate right now. So I'm happy to, happy to talk to you about that part of this later, we can do that. But for right now, we have another applicant waiting. If we're done with this applicant, thank you, and we'll get. Going to move on to item six, pre-application discussion. Applicant James Kizaza, Astec Farm LLC, Maringamun Farm LLC. Location 19 South Street, 23 South Street and East Philly Side of Luton Way, between Route 94 and Woodstock Mountain Road, as depicted on lot line revision map. Application for lot line revision, section block lot 118-1-4, section block lot 118-1-3, and section block lot 121-1-1.1. R A and B G zoning district. Proposed use, lot line revision of Kizaza, Maringamun Farm and Astec Farm. Lot line revisions to enlarge an existing 1.55 acre residential lot to 3.44 acres, including the addition of two bonds to the parcel.
Good evening, I'm James Kizaza, thank you for taking the time to speak with me today. This is a residential building, it's occupied originally by my wife's parents. Justice Stevens served in the justice office for several years. Both of her parents passed away. The house is now occupied by her brother. And what we want to do is deepen up some of the lot lines that we inherited when we bought the property. And also, the one building, you know, identified on the map as barn, which is just in the rear of the house, is actually the garage for the house. That's where the car is stored and so on. And the other building, which is identified as a barn, which we wish to include in the parcel, is also a garage-type structure.